All right. Good evening. We are calling the order of the September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, regular meeting of the Board of Education. Do we have any public comments?
There are none.
All righty. Having done, we will adjourn to closed session.
Could you sit down, ma'am? I'm trying to start the meeting here.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, regular meeting of the Board of Education. We've just come out of closed session. First thing we'd like to do is do the pledge of allegiance. Do I have a volunteer?
Oh.
Thank you, Zesty.
Please stand. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Moving on to roll call. Everyone is present? And our report out of closed session. Doug.
And in closed session, the board took action to approve the recommendation for appointment of Jennifer Wessels as program specialist, tentatively effective October first, two thousand and twenty-four, by a vote of five to zero.
That was Wessels.
Let me come up to it.
It was Brandy. Brandy broke it. Did you see that? She hit it in the bottom seat. Seriously?
You started it, Mark.
All right. Is that better? Okay. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Wessels, and I'm excited to accept the position of program specialist with the Escondido Union School District. I recently served as a program specialist with the Grossmont Union High School District, and I've been a special educator for over eighteen years. I look forward to getting to know the students and the staff and the community here in Escondido. I'm passionate about special education, and I'm eager to collaborate with teachers and site leaders in order to provide excellent educational opportunities for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. And moving on to the approval of the agenda.
Move approval of tonight's agenda?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Got that right.
Leonard, mine is not turning up.
You said change. Well, you already voted. You voted?
Yeah. No, that would if I want to change it.
Oh, I thought you said you didn't get it yet.
Mine didn't come up. My one did not come up.
What's that message up here? The pink?
Rewatch update.
Oh.
I don't want to do that.
Do you think that's wrong?
I am logged in. I guess I thought I was.
Got a probable vote.
Here we go.
Apparently you voted.
You voted?
Well, yeah.
Oh, she voted.
Michelle voted for him. So it did. It was passed unanimously, five to zero. Moving on to the approval of the minutes.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
You beat me this time. There you go.
Yay, for me also. And it passes five to zero.
We will vote this time now?
Nope. I'm trying to bring it up and... There we go. Try signing it again. And moving on to public comments, we do have one speaker this evening, Mr. Ryan Gardner.
Hello. Just want to talk about school safety. We've talked to superintendent, maybe you guys are aware, talked to the principal. Just want to put it out there in case you're not, or in case the public's not aware. But we moved here from Charlotte, North Carolina, this past summer. We have two kids at elementary school here. Just coming from outside of the state and seeing how schools are run here in comparison is pretty jarring, to say the least. On September fourth, my wife went to go pick up her three-year-old from preschool. She came back one o'clock in the afternoon. Our seven-year-old is in our house, supposed to be at school. He's crying. He ended up stranded on the campus, was lost. He panicked. He didn't sneak off campus. He likes the school. He's happy when he goes. He's happy when he leaves, likes the teachers. Basically, he panicked and just thought safest way to go is leave and walk home. You know, we had to call the school to let them know that our son was at our house. They did know that he was missing, but, you know, there's just no... There's no way to know whether a kid leaves campus or not. And it's just unacceptable, at least for elementary school kids, to put the burden on a seven-year-old, a six-year-old, to keep themselves safe. It just seems irresponsible. And just safety protocols in general, it just seems like there's none. School pickup, there's just six hundred kids released, no questions asked. If you didn't see your kid, maybe they're in the bathroom or something. There's no one to ask, you know. If there was someone to ask, who did they leave with? When did they leave? Did they leave? They wouldn't. The school couldn't tell you. When a parent drops off their kid at a school, the expectation is the school keeps them there until they return back to you. And hopefully, things are being... I mean, hopefully, things are being done with it. Just wanted to put it out there. Because the thing that's been bothering us the most is, you know, we should... We bring it up. We talk to a bunch of people. It shouldn't be possible for a seven-year-old to get off campus unnoticed. It shouldn't be possible. And it feels like it's the first time it's ever occurred to anyone. And I think parents in the district, you know, if you've only been to school here, you just think that's how schools are. It's not like that anywhere that we've been to school. And it's, you know, very unsettling, to say the least. You know, we've been told there's secure monitoring. If someone leaves, school will be alerted. Obviously, we knew that wasn't true before. You know, I was told that that actually hasn't happened. It's not implemented yet. You should probably take it off your website. And all the things on the safety website. It sounds like, you know, the district's proud of those things. They're ten years behind. Ten years behind, at least, that we know of, because... Really, what... I mean, there's simple solutions that I think could happen, you know, tomorrow. You could call a security company tomorrow. They would come tomorrow, put sensors on the gates. If a gate goes off, there's a camera pointed at it. Someone could say, shit, six-year-old's leaving. Let's go get that kid. It seems obvious to me, or common sense to me, but the attention and the response so far has been just putting the burden on six-year-olds and seven-year-olds. You know, my son's not going to leave the school again. You know, the school has done things to make him feel more comfortable there, tours and things like that, but just... Also, just the rollout of information going into the school year, getting teachers three days before, getting walk-in procedures the night before, and the email. Go to the fifth-grade gate. We don't know where the fifth-grade gate is. Go to the blacktop. Never been to the school. Don't know what that is. You know, find your teacher's name on a card. He went into the school the first day, prepared to find his teacher's name. It was a Tuesday. It was a different teacher. We didn't know that he had two teachers. Just, you know, it feels like a lack of, I don't know, adults in the room compared to what we're used to. We weren't going to private schools. We were going to public schools, and then your kid wasn't leaving. And it feels like the district is waiting for a disaster to happen before they, you know... I don't know how you made it this far in two thousand and twenty-four. You know, we know there's incidences other than ours. We know this. We know that there's custody disputes where a parent, the wrong one, picks up the kid, and it's just the school has... just washes their hands of it. Once the bell rings, they're gone. And it seems like it's not the school's responsibility. That seems unacceptable. But at the very lowest bar is keeping elementary kids on campus. Because it feels like waiting for a disaster is negligent at this point. Yeah, and, you know, we don't want to get lawyers involved or anything. We just want to see something happen. It wouldn't cost that much to put a camera in place for someone on, just in the office. A bell rings, there's a camera, gate four opened. It seems easy enough. And that's just setting the bar as low as possible. But we really want movement on these things. You know, right now, we just have GPS trackers on our kids and watches that we had to go buy so we'd know if they leave a radius, because it feels like the school doesn't... I mean, if a kid was trying to leave, it feels like they could. But, you know, my son left in a panic and cried the whole way home, walked through a park to get home. Very unsettling. But that's basically it. Just wanted to let everyone be aware that this isn't normal for schools, at least elementary school kids. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Okay, moving on to public hearings. We have none. Port from the CSEA. Do we have anyone from CSEA? No? All righty. Triple EA.
Good evening, President Houston, school board members, cabinet, Dr. Barra. It was good to meet with you guys today. We really appreciate those conversations, and it seemed to be very positive, and that's always a great start. I wanted to say hello to all of our principals that are here this evening. It's nice to see all of you guys, and it's also hello to all the people out there. And I wanted to thank CSEA for the start of the year. It was really tough on some certain things, and CSEA did an awesome job supporting all of our certificateed staff members. So thank you to our brothers and sisters in CSEA, and I hope we all have a wonderful year. Thanks.
Thank you. And moving on to written communications. All have been distributed to all the board members. And going to F1 consent. Is there anything that we want to pull or have discussed? Haven't seen none. We need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve is presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, John. There it goes. And it passes five to zero. Moving on to L1 presentations.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we will have an opportunity to share some of our summary data reflective of the 2023-24 school year. EUSD is committed to working towards ensuring that we're supporting our students to reach their unlimited potential with academic achievement as our primary focus. We know that our teachers and administrators and all support staff work diligently to help our students progress academically. And we also know that many of our students have significant challenges. Addressing the varied needs of our students is a complex issue, and we continue to do everything that we can to meet their needs. With a lens of continuous improvement, school teams use this data to reflect on practice and instructional strategies and programs to make those needed changes or adjustments. We all feel a strong sense of urgency to maximize the time and the resources that we have in order to help our students succeed. So I want to thank all of our administrators that are here with us this evening. I want to thank them for their attendance tonight and for their ongoing leadership and the work that they do in the service of our students and of our community. So next, I'm going to go ahead and invite up, and we're very grateful, to Kathleen Sorenson, our Director of Program Monitoring and Accountability.
Good evening, President Houston, board members, superintendent Dr. Barra, and cabinet. It's my honor tonight to present our 2023-24 summative academic data. As I have gathered this data, it's been a really great learning process. Even though I've been doing this a really long time, I continue to learn every year and really try to look at the data with a lens of curiosity, to see what I can learn and how we can look at data differently to get information, to change and stretch, and to better meet the needs of our students. So with that, I'll go on to the data. So we're going to start with our CASP data. And as you may be aware, the CASP data is still embargoed. It has not been released publicly. It's scheduled to be released on October seventeenth, I believe. However, students or parents have received student results. Teachers have all the results. We're just not allowed to publicly post anything. So with that being said, we only have our data. We have not had the opportunity to look at the data from other districts. So I'm going to start with the CASP. And just as a quick review, the CASP assessment is given to students in third through eighth grade. They take the CASP in ELA and math, and fifth and eighth graders take the CASP in science, or we call it the CAST. The main difference between the IREDDI assessment and the CASP is that IREDDI starts with kindergarten and goes through eighth grade. Third grade, or CASP starts with third grade and goes through eighth grade. And the CASP has something called performance tasks in ELA and math. The performance tasks in ELA usually consist of students getting some text documents and having to read the resources and write some sort of response, whether it be an argument, or a narrative, or an informal piece. And then in math, they get some type of problem. But there's a lot of language involved in the performance tasks, so that is a big difference between the two assessments. So this is a comparison of our all-student data, of all students, third through eighth grade, on the CASP between 2023 and 2024. And just as a reminder, red is standard not met. Yellow is standard nearly met. Green is standard met, and blue is standard exceeded. So obviously, the goal is for all kids to be green or above. And as you can see, the results were pretty consistent between 2023 and 2024. Okay, next, this is a comparison of the two years by student group. So we have all students, our English-only group, our English learner group, RFEP, our students who have been reclassified, SED is socio-economically disadvantaged, and SWD is students with disabilities. And you can see in... On this slide, again, the data is fairly flat. And English learners and students with disabilities are an area of concern that Ed Services staff is continuing to work to support schools with. Okay, this slide is looking at a comparison between the grade levels. So this is ELA, CASP ELA. And on this slide, third, fourth, and seventh grade showed a little bit of growth in the percentage of students who scored standard met or above. Okay, then we'd like to... This is my favorite part. We'd like to highlight some really extraordinary growth at our schools. You can see that Bernardo had great growth in third and fourth grade. Conway had seventeen points in third grade. Felicita had great growth in third and fourth grade. Glenview, all grade levels made growth. So only two schools had all grade levels made growth, and that was Glenview and Rock Springs. And Glenview also made some pretty phenomenal growth, with sixteen for third grade and twelve for fourth grade. Then Juniper, fourth grade, made some great growth. Limitless, third grade, twenty-two, and seventh grade, sixteen. LR Greens, fifth grade, made nine points growth. Miller, fifth grade, twelve points growth. North Broadway had two grade levels, with eight and thirteen points, respectively, for third and fourth grade. Orange Glen, eighth grade, or sorry, fourth grade, had a gain of eight points. And Quantum, fourth grade, twenty-seven point gain.
Sorry, Kathleen, are these the same students from third grade to, like, fourth grade? Or these are fourth grade compared to last fourth grade?
Exactly. Fourth grade compared to the last fourth grade.
So different kids?
Different kids. It's not matched cohort. Then Reedy Creek, fourth grade, fifteen points gain. And then Rock Springs, again, all grade levels made growth, but fourth grade made eleven points, and fifth grade made fourteen. Then Rose, third grade, six points. Del Dios, sixth grade, plus seven, and Hidden Valley, seventh grade, plus six. Okay, and then on to math. Again, this is a comparison of 23-24 math results, which were, again, flat, but there were grade levels that did show some growth. So this is our student group, and this growth, or comparison, excuse me, was very flat. And English learners and students with disabilities continue to be a concern. Then this is our grade level growth. And there was actually some pretty nice growth in some of the grades in math, which was paired with a decrease in the percentage of students that were at the not met level. So third grade made 2.6% growth in the percentage of kids that were proficient. Fourth grade made 2.9% growth in the students that were proficient. And we're really kind of excited about this, because last year was our first year of adopting a new math curriculum. And it's often hard to keep the momentum when you start a new math curriculum, but our coaches and our teachers worked together and kept the momentum going. And we actually had some fairly nice growth. And then I also want to point out that seventh grade made 3.4% growth. And then on to the schools. These are the highlights of the schools. Bernardo, fourth grade, made great growth. FAR, third grade, plus fourteen. Felicita, again, had two grades that made growth. Third grade, plus six. Fourth grade, plus eleven. Glenview had two grades that made growth, third grade and fourth grade. Limitless, third grade and seventh grade made growth, with six and seven points, respectively. Lincoln, plus eight at fifth grade. LR Green, fifth grade, plus six. Miller, third grade, plus fifteen, which is great. Fifth grade, plus seven. North Broadway had third and fourth grade both make gains, at nine and six, respectively. Orange Glen, fourth grade, made twenty points growth. Pioneer, fourth grade, thirteen. Quantum, again, made some really great growth, at twenty-one for fourth grade and six for nine. Sorry. Nine points for sixth grade. And Reedy Creek had three grades that made growth. Third grade, plus thirteen. Fourth grade, plus eight. And fifth grade, plus six. Hidden Valley, seventh grade made plus nine. I believe that they all... Hidden Valley also, seventh grades made growth in ELA as well. Mission, plus seven for seventh grade, and Rincon, plus six for seventh grade. So we did well in seventh grade. Okay, this is the first year we're sharing our science results. The reason is, is that this is the first year that the science results will be appearing on the California school dashboard. So we wanted to make sure that you were aware of those scores. Students take that test in fifth and eighth grade, and this is, again, a comparison of 2023 and 2024. And as you can see, those scores were fairly consistent from year to year. And again, this is not matched data. It's 23s, fifth graders, to 24s, fifth graders, et cetera. Okay, in the past, the board has requested information about data from similar school districts, schools that have similar... Or districts that have similar demographics to Escondido. So I selected El Cajon, Lemon Grove, and National School Districts, because I wanted to choose districts in San Diego County. And those schools had very similar percentages of students that were on free and reduced lunch and English learners. So these are the results comparing 22 to 23, because I don't have the data yet for 24. So you can see that most of the districts experienced... So you can see that most of the districts experienced fairly consistent results from year to year. And then the next slide is the same information for math. Okay, now we're going to move on to I Ready. I Ready is a little bit different as it reports the data out in five levels instead of four levels like the CASP. So those levels are, starting at the top, mid to above grade level, early on grade level, one grade level below, two grade levels below, and three grade levels below. This chart compares the results between spring 2023 and spring 2024. And again, that data is pretty consistent between the two years. Okay, next is I Ready by student groups. And again, this is breaking it down by all students, English learners, and students with disabilities. And again, this this data is consistent with the CASP data in the fact that we we realize that English learners and students with disabilities need to continue to be a focus. You'll also see that there aren't, the percentages of students in the red aren't as high in I Ready for the all student group because it can, this dataset contains kindergarten, kindergartners, first graders, and second graders who tend to score a lot higher than the the older students. Okay, on to math. This is a comparison of 2023 to 2024 for all students again. And again, the results are consistent between the two years. And then this is the, this slide is the data by student group for math. And again, the the trends are very similar with the student groups. I Ready doesn't have as much language on the test in terms of math because there isn't a performance task. So our English learners tend to do better on the I Ready test, plus it it includes all students, kindergarten through eighth grade. Okay, next, we're going to look at the I Ready trends over the school year. Okay, as we have mentioned before, when students take the test in the fall, they're taking a test on end-of-year standards for their current grade. So they haven't been taught the standards yet. So the expectation, according to I Ready, is that most students who are on track would score either at early on grade level or one level below in the fall. And then if students are making typical growth, you should see that fewer and fewer students are scoring below. And there is an increase in students who are scoring at or above. And you can see that trend here.
I'm sorry, can you clarify that one more time of what it's testing in the fall?
It's testing third grades, like if you're a third grade student, you're being tested on all of the third grade standards. So it's what you would have mastered by the end of the school year. It's a standards-based test.
Okay, thank you.
And that's why the scores, the the kids make typical growth because they're learning the standards as they go. So that's the expectation from I Ready. Our kids, of course, need to, our students who are scoring below grade level, of course, need to make that stretch growth, that additional growth. This is the I Ready math results by student group. And again, you see the similar trends, but you can also see the growth within the school year. And there is some pretty nice growth in the percentage of students who are proficient and some decrease in the percentage of students who are below grade level. Okay, now we're going to look at I Ready stretch growth, which has been a focus for the past year. So this is showing winter to spring, I Ready reading, stretch growth for the 23, 24 school year. And our goal is that all students meet at least 76% of their stretch growth goal. So the percentage between the two years, or the two, the winter and spring, the percentage of students meeting this goal increased by 20%. It is, we are really, really focusing on stretch growth. But it is important to note that if a student is very, very far below, if they're three or more grade levels below, they, it's possible that they can make all of their stretch growth, maybe even more than 100% of their stretch growth, and they still may not make it to the next level. Okay, next, this is our students who were in reading intervention. And again, it's it's the stretch growth. And here, the percentage of students meeting the growth goal of 76% or more increased by 25%. So there was a difference in the percentage of students in intervention who met that growth. And keeping in mind that the students in intervention were targeted for intervention because they were, they started below grade level. Okay, next, we're going to move on to stretch growth for math. And here, the percentage of students meeting the growth goal increased by 26% between winter and spring. Then next, we're going to look at math intervention. And if you recall, we we had a lot of math intervention going on last year. So here, you can see that the percentage of students meeting the growth goal in math increased by 26%. And as I ran this data, I was a little perplexed as to why we weren't seeing more growth. And it occurred to me that that this growth is measuring all of the domains in math. And our math intervention focused on numbers and operations, just one domain. But that's really the most important domain for students who are below grade level. So I wanted to find a way to look at how students did in the numbers and operations domain. So there's not stretch growth for the the domains, but you can see if students changed a level or not. And here's where you can see our students in intervention really, really grew. So here you can see that the three or more grade levels grew 50, it's hard for me to read these numbers, 59%, I think. 74 for two or more grade levels below, and then 36 for one or more grade level below. So we were really happy with this data. That we, of course, want more students to to meet 100% of their stretch growth goal. But we feel like students really were growing in this intervention with with these results. It really shows that it it made a difference for the students receiving the intervention. Okay, now on to LPAC, which is our assessment of English learner proficiency. So I'm going to go straight to the English Language Progress Indicator. And this is a projection, the 2024 score is a projection. So the English Learner Progress Indicator measures growth on the LPAC. If a student is a Level 1 and they move to Level 2, they met their growth. If they're a Level 4 and they stay a Level 4, they met their growth. Levels 2 and 3 are split, the scale score is split in half. And if students are on the, if they're a Level 2 or 3 and they're on the lower half of the scale score range, and they grow to the higher half of the scale score range, they meet their growth. Or if they're of any Level 2 and they go to Level 3, they meet their growth. So this is showing that 43.5% of our students met that growth goal this year, which is down from the previous year. We had a little bit of a spike last year. But it's fairly similar to the other years. So next, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Filia. Oh, are there any questions on the data?
Okay, I I have a variety of real quick questions. So just starting off on the English Language Progress Indicator, is this indicating that only 44, 45, 48% of our students are making progress as indicated by the LPAC? Is that, is that the deal?
Yes, that is.
Okay. What would our analysis be of what's happening with the other percent of the students? I mean, I understand they're not doing well on the LPAC test, but what would our analysis be of why that's happening?
I've spent a lot of time looking at that data, and I've put, put a lot of data together for the schools to be able to look at what the domain scores are. Because on the LPAC, students get a score on an overall score. They get, and I'm sure you're familiar with this, they get a, domain scores, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And they get a, I'm forgetting the word for it, a listening and speaking score and a reading and writing score combined. What, so I looked at the data, and I also, like, I took the practice test to see what was on the test. And I feel like students are struggling with being able to to produce generative language. So from what I read, I, when students are reclassified, they write a writing sample, I read all of the writing samples. So it it looks like students are struggling with generating the language that they need to be able to respond to certain questions. And of course, if they're already struggling in reading and writing, regardless of the language, you need, you need language to be able to read and write. But if they were also struggling with that, if their language is a little stronger, then that might be an issue too.
Okay, and I'm not sure if the, because this isn't really a data question, it's more of a process question. What would our our district process be possibly for Dr. Filia? On, okay, so we have this data showing that our students are not, according to the LPAC, according to that one measure, are not making the progress that we would want. How would we then, as a district, address that at the school site and at the classroom level? I'm not sure which one of you that question is for.
Can I maybe start?
Please, absolutely.
So English learners are are very important to me. It's an area of passion for me. So one of the things that I wanted to do is ensure that every school, every grade level team, knew who those students were. So I produced spreadsheets with pivot tables, everybody knows I love pivot tables, where teachers can identify exactly who our students are that met the growth or didn't meet the growth. Because it's important to look at the students who met the growth too, to see what's happening with those students. It also identifies students who are long-term English learners. So it was really important for me that schools get that data right away so that they could use that data to start planning immediately in terms of how to to group students and consider what their instruction might look like. So this this started, actually, even before we got the LPAC results, as we started planning in middle school for personalized learning. And in personalized learning, there is, at all of the schools, there's, there's great emphasis on English language development, more so than we've had the the past few years. And so with that.
Absolutely. So I think that part of it is taking a look at all of the data, making sure that our teacher teams have access, make sure that they know that who those students are. Additionally, we've had our principals be able to come together, review their data, and take a look and collaborate really with one another. We know that similarly, as we have the the expectation for our teacher teams to come together and share their knowledge about best practices, be able to dive into the data and set those goals. Similarly, that was a shift, that's a shift that we've been doing this school year in order to have our principals go ahead and do that similar process. Kind of trying to make sure that they have all of the resources, anything that they may need as far as data to understand that. The support from all of the team also, but then time that's carved out for them to come together and have those discussions. And then that, of course, would translate into their actions. That goes back to really supporting their teacher teams on the instructional part piece as well.
Okay, so systemically, just staying with English learners for for a minute, is there anything more we can do as a district to support our English learners, both the newcomers and the long-term learners who may have been born here and still have not achieved proficiency, academic proficiency especially? Is there anything more we can do to support those students and support the teachers in in helping them acquire English?
I could, let me take that. It's really about, as you heard, it's the generative, it's the production of language. When you're an English learner, you've got a, there's, you know, when you look at the development of English learners, there's, it's that quiet stage. They're listening, and they probably will understand before they can actually start producing. So you need to have noisy cloud, they need to be engaged. It really goes to the engagement. They need to be able to express language, talk to their peers, talk to their counterparts, talk to the adults. If you're, you walk into a classroom and they're sitting there quietly, that's, they need to be producing language because they're going to make mistakes initially. But then they need to continue, and that's where they're going to, they need to practice, produce it. Because you you've got to be able to, even when you're writing, if you think about it, if you have somebody, you've got to express what you're thinking about. And so first, you can tell someone about it, what your theory is, what your assumptions are, and then you can write about it. So it's really, that goes back to, our classes need to have, be, especially for English learners, they need to be producing that speech, producing the language. And the more you get them engaged in, with high interest, hot, hands-on activities, they're, naturally, they're going to be talking and talking and talking about what they're learning. So I think it's a continued emphasis in more robust language production in the classrooms.
Part of it is the, using the academic language as well.
Exactly, right.
Not just the common vernacular.
And you'll notice they'll start with the common vernacular, they'll be digging through their, like, oh, how do you say that word? How do you say that word? But then they, they they will produce it. And the more they do that, the more they're going to be able to produce that language with that.
Are we still on questions? Do I have, can I get another one? Okay, so I'm I'm looking now, I'm just going back to the beginning of the presentation. One, two, three, four, fifth page in, 2023, 24 CASP ELA results, third through eighth grade. I'm just going to take this one as an example. I'm wondering if we think that a data point that might be useful for our schools and our teacher teams might be more of a longitudinal look where I know that we're often, we often would like to see grade, you know, a cohort of students. So what did they look like in third grade? How did they progress into fourth grade, then fifth grade, then sixth grade? I'm wondering if we provide similar charts like that with cohort, cohorted achievement data so that we can see, yeah, this one, it looks like 23 or 24, they went up. But where did they start in third grade and how is it comparing? Are they, is the group really improving or is it really staying static or is it up and down? I'm wondering if we provide that sort of a data point for our classroom teachers or administrators, or if we look at that. That was a long question, I'm sorry. That was not a concise question.
But a good one. We have provided a historical CASP result sheet for probably, but we've done it since before we had CASP. When we had CST, that data only shows the percent proficient. And we do that for all students and English learners. It's not It's not a matched, and the reason it's not a matched cohort, which means we're looking at the same, exact same kids from year to year, the reason it's not matched is because we're looking at English learners too, and English learners reclassify. And so if I were to, to look at a cohort of English learners that had been in the district four years, I wouldn't have, a lot of the really strong students would have left that cohort, if that makes sense. So it's, we, every year, principals get that data that shows, every year we've had CASP, what the results are for every grade. What we can add to that is showing not just the percent proficient, but all of it.
Right, so, yeah, especially in the case of, of EL students, that would not be a matched cohort, but just the overall, the overall data, it, it may be something that you're providing to the school sites and, and that we're not seeing is those, those approximate cohorts of students as they progress through. So.
Well, actually, with this, we could.
Only one year.
Yeah, yeah, I know, well, that's because we, between nineteen and twenty-two, there were no tests.
Well, but we, we have some of the data and I, I understand it's imperfect. We have it in table form, but not where we can look at it and not, and you've got to go across.
So, so what I'm hearing is we would do, like for a seventh grader, we could follow that and do sixth grade, seventh grade, and then measure a bar graph with third, uh, sixth grade and then fifth grade, fourth grade.
We could, and it, it just seems to me like it would be important to at least have that as a data point, and maybe you already do, but just so that you're not having to go through the table, the larger table that we also have here and figure out, okay, it's going down this way, but just here it is and making it a little more, more obvious. Are we satisfied with our data? That's for whoever wants to jump in.
Absolutely. I think that we always have a sense of urgency and kind of obligation to do what we can for our students. And I think that everyone, from the classroom teacher to support staff to our administrators and certainly the team up here at the district office, it absolutely is a priority for us to ensure that we're doing everything we can, both to really understand the data and, as Kathleen mentioned, we, I think we learn more every time. The gaps that our students have in their learning really, I think, has led us down this path of the need of really drilling down to understand what exactly are the gaps and how can we plan instruction that's going to meet those gaps. So it is, it's very complex, like, like we mentioned, but really even kind of uncovering that one data point around the math data and the impact of the interventions, it's a very discreet kind of, discreet lessons that are being provided to those students. And it's positive that we were able to see the movement and see the impact because we know everyone's working very diligently, but we need to be able to make sure that we're making informed decisions and that we're seeing the impact of all the work.
Anything else?
Well, I agree with you. I mean, from going in the classrooms already this year, you can see how hard the students are working, how hard the teachers are working, how the principals, and I wanted to thank the principals for coming here tonight, we appreciate you, we know how much is on your plate, and, and you're doing a tremendous job. But we, from my position, it's very difficult to sit here, year after year, year after year, year after year, all the money we've put at it, all the programs we put at it, and still not seeing growth, because to me, that's failing our students. I don't care how we're comparing to other districts, I care about our students in here and how they're leaving this district and how we're going to improve their lives and making them great citizens by giving them the tools and the skills they need to be successful. And so that's very hard for me, and that's why I always get very upset over these things because I, I want to know what more we can do or what we can change or what we can improve on to really provide these students with the opportunities life has in front of them. And, and that's where the crux of my question is and my concern is, because we've spent a, we've spent more than a year looking at the data, but like this last year, we have spent, you know, the teachers have met together, worked on that data, evaluated the data, and we're still, I mean, flat. You have some great examples, but if we're not moving, it means there were some other schools that went way down or other levels that went way down. And to me, that's just unacceptable. So that's my challenging position right here. What can we do as a board or what should we be doing to move them forward?
I think that's, that's absolutely the, weighs on all of us about what are those next steps. It is going to take time and I know that we have, you know, spent a lot of resources, allocated resources and had this discussion on an ongoing basis. I believe that what we're kind of leaning into is this idea that not one person, there isn't one program, one, you know, a group of people necessarily that are specifically have the, the solid answer. It's really going to take collaboration and a team approach where everyone can really be able to come together to address those challenges that our students are having. I think that the structures, we have great structures that are in place, but if we're not making sure that we're reviewing the data to see the impact of those structures, but that, that really does take a significant amount of kind of effort and coordination, which is why we really know that the two key factors for student success are that classroom teacher and the school leader. And so we want to support those groups as much as possible. And so what we've been leaning into this school year is really making sure that our principals have the, kind of the guidance and the coaching for them to be able to review the data, make those goals, be able to kind of share how they're going to best monitor both instruction and the instructional planning. So those are the structures that we have in place kind of moving forward. And again, as teams come together and determine what's successful and the impact of, of their work, those are the things that we need to share out with others. So those success stories that happened at these different schools, those highlights, those are things that we want to lean in on also and, and find out exactly what, what elements were in place for those teams to have that success. And again, how can we continue to replicate that?
If I could make one more point, there's one other key element in that, certainly the classroom teacher, the classroom environment, the administrator, but also the family and the home environment and getting the student to school each and every day, hopefully on time. And I would just like to emphasize the importance of school attendance because if we look at the students who are really struggling, I think we will find a strong correlation to either chronic absenteeism or, or chronic tardiness, missing instructional minutes. And I'd like to, although it's not part of this presentation, call out the people who are doing attendance work in this district because it, it's, it is being noticed, it's very difficult and hopefully that will help raise our scores as well. But parental involvement and attendance, I think, are just as key as what any teacher can do because they cannot teach, they cannot learn if they're not in school.
Yeah, and then I appreciate what you're saying because I think it's important that we also look at what is on our teachers' plates and what are on our principals' plates so they have the time to collaborate. It seems like it's, I mean, we just keep throwing things at them and, you know, I apologize for that. But I mean, I don't know how the principals do it with monitoring the classroom, having their admin duty, have student, you know, high need students that they're trying to take care of, and then being able to give concise and helpful feedback to our teachers. And the same thing for our teachers, if they're overworked with, you know, busy work and forms to fill out and whatnot, how they're able to spend the time properly to assess the data and work on those, you know, specific lessons for those students. So I think, again, we need to look at that we're doing it smarter, that we're not just putting on extra burdens to say, oh, we've collaborated, oh, they've done this, this, look, we've checked this box. No, that they're actually taking the time and creating the environment where they can make these changes and they can talk about them. Because we have amazing teachers, we have amazing principals here, and I, I think we just need to give them a little bit more freedom and encouragement and free them up from some of those duties that are just really bogging them down because this is, this, it's just stagnant and it's very frustrating.
I just had a couple of questions. In respects to the, the CASP, when you looked at the other agent or the other school district, you looked at Elkhorn Valley, Lemon Grove, and National School District, and they're pretty much all the same.
Correct. I selected them because the, the demographics were very similar, so the students in, in their schools are experiencing many of the same things our students are experiencing. Elkhorn has more students who speak Arabic, for instance, but there's, there's still English learners.
I, I understand. My, and I think the reason, one of the reasons why the question came up to you guys, we wanted to see comparable districts was if there was one that was standing out in a certain area, we could then collaborate with them to find out what are you doing differently to maybe bring it in. If everybody's on the same level, then how do you, how do you then collaborate or get better or new ideas to bring those numbers up? And when you pick and choose, oh, they're all the same, that tells me nothing. I mean, I, I'm looking for a school that maybe has a higher, that we can go to them and say, how are you guys doing this differently? What have you guys done to make this go up? Now, granted, we, two years ago, were, the numbers were just, it was, we were in triage. We were, we were just hoping to, to, to get the kids to school. Well, now we're at a point now where I think we need to start looking at, we need to have that, that increase. And it's not easy, and I don't think that anyone on the board here expects everything to jump up ten, twenty, thirty percent. It's a slow progress of getting up. We're steering, we're, we're hoping that we're steering the ship in the correct direction. But when we say, what do we do? How can we make this better? What collaboration is occurring to make this better? I want to see the whole picture, okay? And in respect to that, when you did the highlights for math, for the CASP, for Bernardo, fourth grade was plus ten, awesome. What did, what did everyone else do? I would like to see all of that information so that you can then go back and go, okay, well, fifth grade was plus one. Okay, well, that's something obviously the principal's going to see. The principal's going to say, well, why it was only plus one when fourth was plus ten? That's a conversation, that's a conversation, so that we know that those conversations are occurring. And please don't think I'm, don't think you're having those conversations, I absolutely believe you do, okay? But for us on this side of the table, I would like to see all of the information, good, bad, indifferent. I want to see it all. I don't want selected information given to me so that I can go, okay, well, great, hey, Really Creek was up on all of them, awesome, but you only gave me third, fourth, and fifth. Well, third, fourth, and fifth is forecast, yes. But, but in respects to, I would like to see all the information, if that makes sense. And it gives us a better picture of where this ship is going. It's a slow process, I know that. And everyone is working really hard, the teachers, admin, everyone is working really hard. And we, at least I am very impressed with the amount of work that happens, okay? I could not be an admin or a teacher because I, I just don't have that mindset. But I thank all of you for what you do, all the effort that you put into it. But I want all of the information. I don't want selective information so that we as a group can come back and say, this is the way we, now we want to turn the ship another ten degrees and we want to go this direction. So that as a group, we have the ability to see, make an educated decision on which direction we want. And also the input, the input is so important. We need to hear from them on what they think would be better. Is there, is there, is there a one-on-one collaboration with a principal and a teacher? So obviously, the principals have the, have the ability to know how a previous year class went. Is there a collaboration between that principal and that teacher going, hey, you were plus ten, what did you do differently? How was your class? How did you do that? So that when they get all of the teachers in that one group talking about it, we can say, hey, teacher X had plus ten, awesome, how did you do that? Because we want to get all of the teachers on that same page. Or the ideas flowing so that it will increase it, okay? I mean, I'm, I, I worked in a completely different career mode, but when my supervisor came to me and said, hey, you did a great job, how did you do that? We want to implement that with everyone within the group. That type of collaboration brings up that, that pride in your work that you know you're being noticed, but also, it also says, hey, what can we do to make this better? And I don't know if it can, if it can go into this type of cohort or collaboration between the teachers and admin, but I would hope that at some point in time, there is a conversation to say, hey, we're, we're moving forward, how can we make it better? And I, I know everyone's working hard. I mean, don't think that I, don't think that they're working hard, but it's just, I like, I'd like to see a little bit more information, if that makes sense. And it really wasn't a question, it was just more of an observation. Anything else?
Can I just add one thing? I want to commend the amount of information that we do have because we've got so much more data right now than most districts ever look at. And I know we're feeling like we want more and we want it maybe in a, a different format or more complete formats, but when you compare what we're looking at versus what most school districts look at, we're, we're, we're way ahead. And I understand we want more, we want it in a more usable format, but my gosh, compared with what we were getting, compared with what other school districts in our area look at, with what other boards and principals have to look at, we've got a lot of information, varied information, multiple measures of what students are learning. So thank you all for that.
Yeah, and I also want, when I saw all of the information that we were given, I thought, wow, that was a lot of work. Although, it was good, not just for us to see, but also for everyone else because it gives you a lot to work with. The collaboration, I think, is coming about at the grade level when we, through the wheel. When the, when the grade levels meet and they collaborate and say, what are you doing? And they give ideas to one another, so, and that's fairly new. So I have to believe what I did to give, give myself some heart because like even the, the plus ten, that was not a cohort. And if you go back and look, well, maybe the growth wasn't that amazing, but there was growth. I went back and looked at, because the, the earliest data we have is from two thousand fifteen. And if you look at, for instance, at Bernardo, the third grade in two thousand fifteen, and then you go to two thousand twenty-four, you just skip ahead. Now, we had some high points along the way and then we got it by COVID. And there were two years we didn't even test. And there are a lot of kids that didn't do well on the computer, and I understand that. We had a big learning loss. We just have to admit that, but we're trying to get, to claw back from that. And so from fifty-four in two thousand fifteen, that same grade level is up to sixty-four. So it's not back to the high point, but there is, we can see, and if you do that with most of the grades, you can see that we're coming back. We have to be consistent now and we have to stick with it. We have, we can't be jumping back and forth and to different, try this, try that. We have to find something that we believe will work, for instance, going back to phonics. And if the math is really, I saw a weakness, I thought, in fifth grade math, of looking at all the numbers. But other than that, the, the teachers seem to think that it's, it's working, it's, it's better. There's a lot of language and that makes it hard because we have a lot of kids who are still working with the language, a little bit weak with the language, so it's a little bit unfair. But I, I think, and you know how long I've been in this district, and I always am cheering for these kids. And one of the most important things, as Doug said, they have to be in the seats. And we have to get the parents to get them into school and get them into those seats because if they're not there, they're not learning and there are gaps forming. And they'll be lost, they'll come back and be lost and then they'll And they'll be lost. They'll come back and be lost, and then they'll just lose heart. But I, everybody has their job cut out for them. It's not easy in this day and age. So I commend everyone who has taken this on and who cares so much. They want the best for the kids that they're teaching. And I want to see the best. We all do. That's why we're sitting here. So thanks for the hard work and just keep, keep working at it. Don't lose heart.
Anything else? Any more comments, questions? Thank you very much. Did you have one more? Yeah, I think you had one more slide.
Yes. It's my next hour of my presentation. So as far as next steps, again, we've talked a lot about these pieces, but there are some specific areas that we are focusing in on. As you mentioned, we have elementary universal access. That's something that we've been supporting our principals on. They've been working with their teacher teams on ensuring that that, those schedules are there and that they're monitoring that instruction, that they're helping assist any way that they can in regards to giving feedback. And that when the teachers do come together to plan, that they're looking at that, that they're planning for that specifically in order to differentiate and teach to those gaps. Additionally, some of our sites do have intervention support. We continue with targeted professional development in the areas that are needed. Specifically, we've been focusing in on math. We're continuing to offer some Orton-Gillingham training as we have staff come on board. We also are looking at EL strategies and specifically for ELD instruction, trying to ensure that those, that instruction is occurring at our sites and that, that the strategies are appropriate for the appropriate levels of the students that they're teaching. As we mentioned, I think at our last meeting, we talked a little bit about ELOP and after-school intervention. So we've had a, a good increase in the number of intervention classes that are also being offered as part of the after-school ELOP offerings to students. We mentioned the ongoing teacher collaboration and instructional planning, as well as our principal collaboration and planning that they're engaged in. And again, just trying to support them in supporting their teacher teams. One of the things that we've tried to focus in on as far as focusing their work is that there are, all of our work is aligned and that we're really looking at those areas of academic achievement. We talked about student engagement, making sure that that instruction was something that students were present for. So that includes attendance, as well as just their own kind of ownership around authentic learning experiences so that they have that motivation to participate. And then, of course, culture and climate are things that we have to continue to attend to. And as you see across the top there, there are specific metrics. We've been working with our principals on setting those goals and talking about how they might consider, as we're all trying to improve our own practice and reflect, we all want to be able to identify some specific actions that will go with those goals in order to best make sure that that's having the impact that we want. And so also in the spirit of collaboration, all of our principals, they come together at our meetings, they're in specific cohorts as an opportunity for them to share best practices, share strategies, and resources. And then they're all kind of captured in this hub of sorts so that everyone kind of has that access. And just sharing, sharing information and ideas. So that covers the quick summary on the next steps.
All right, so you're ready for questions?
More questions?
I apologize for jumping the gun.
It's okay. All good.
Do we have any questions? No, we don't. Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to business services. N1.
All right, this is only going to take three hours. We're too tired for that. Okay. So tonight, we have to present our unaudited actuals. This is how we finished the year previous to this, in 2324 year, after we finished closing the books. Previously, we've seen a version of this where we estimated the end of the year when we adopted our budget. Now we finished that process, and here is how we finished the year. So like I said, when we adopted the budget, this is how we estimated to finish the year here. This is how the year actually finished, the 2324 year. So we're going to spend some time adding and subtracting to figure out the difference. We've done that for you. And I'm going to just talk about the differences and what's caused them. And so in the unrestricted, you can see that the net change there, meaning that there's an additional $5.6 million in the ending fund balance there for, in the unrestricted. And in the green box there, just some bullet points I'll quickly go over. We did actually receive an increase in lottery revenue towards the end of last year. We were fully, to be able to fully recognize all of the interest that we earned just in our treasury fund, that's just all our general fund monies that's in the county treasury. And so that's included in that. Also, the revenues being higher is why those things are there. The expense is going down. We also, we did the bit of a spending freeze or slowdown at the end of last year. Our principals can attest to that, I know. We also included in that, there was, are some of our remaining ESER projects, our capital projects we were doing, some of them around air conditioning and other things aren't, weren't going to be done by the end of the year or by the end of September when that, those, those funds expire. And so what we did was transferred less of our RDA money and equal to the amount of ESER funds, transferred other expenses into those ESER funds, at least spent them down so that we don't send a single penny back to the state for any of those unspent funds when they were to expire. So there was an equal transfer there. And then, of course, the EUSD plan where we've been, as we've been presenting, we'll continue to talk about even tonight, of where we were able to use some of our remaining one-time funds to offset expenses and allowing those funds to drop to the bottom line in order to give us some bit of reserve going forward into the next couple of years. In the restricted side, that fund balance increased by just over 11 million, and some of those lottery funds are actually restricted, some are unrestricted, so some of that's in there as well. There was some unspent federal funds, your, your, your title funds and whatnot. There's also some carryover from our ELOP program in there from the year we just had, but also that additional carryover we've been holding on to for a while that we're going to be doing some things with this year is included in, in that carryover there as well. And then the other movement that we've been doing in moving the restricted one-time monies into, for expenses into those as part of our EUSD plan to build that bottom line. Is there any questions on any of these so far before I go on? Perfect. So that 5.6 million that we talked about, the ending fund balance in the unrestricted, you could call that carryover more commonly, this being our multi-year projection going forward. So I just want to remind everybody about a couple of things here because if you were to look at the budget book, the expenses are projected to be declining in those, those two out years here, the 25, 26, and 26, 27. You wouldn't necessarily see that in the context of just the straight budget pages that you would see in that book. But those red numbers on the top, if you recall, when we adopted our budget, the NYPD, in order to maintain the deficits of 5.9 and 4.9 in those two out years, and to remain above our reserve requirement, are still counting on 4.6 million in additional expense reduction cuts, budget cuts, and 3.3 million in that third year. And I say that because when, when you look at the budget itself, the attached to this board item, you'll just see those expenses where they are. If we don't make those cuts, that, the deficit, the net change down there, that negative 5.9, for instance, in the 25, 26 year, if we don't make those cuts, goes up by 4.6 million more dollars in that deficit. That 5.6 million in carryover, we saw it was one of the changes from adopted or the estimated actuals to now. That's actually living down, and we see if this is going to work. It's working. That's just been added to this line for now because there's more decisions to be made about that. We're going to talk about that on the next slide. Is there any questions on this and how this lays out at this point? So here's the next version, 2.0 of the forecaster that we introduced when we adopted our budget in a way for us to graphically show the multi-year projection. It's all just a bunch of numbers on the page, but here is a much easier way to understand the ending fund balance. And so each of those lines do represent different versions of the ending fund balance. The black line across the bottom, that's just our average 4% minimum reserve requirement across the bottom there. We must remain, our ending fund balance must remain above that black line. That's fiscal solvency. So the, start off with the blue, dark blue line on the top. That's the budget, adopted budget, the EUSD plan. So those are what those ending fund balances along with that plan. Included on the bottom here, color-coded to those lines are the projected cuts. So for instance, on the previous slide, we saw the red numbers on top, the 4.6 and the 3.3. In those two years, that corresponds to those blue colored 4.6, 3.3. So in those, for that blue line to stay where it is above the black line, those are the projected cuts that keep it there. The red line is the version at the bottom there with the asterix, is if we were to make none of those cuts. And like I said, if we do not make those cuts, then our deficit grows by those amount, which then takes us to the black line and below. We would be at our reserve by the end of next year. And as you can see, by the end of the third year, we would have a negative fund balance, meaning that we would have $0 and in fact would owe somebody money, which is absolutely where the state starts to get involved. And we cannot even adopt a budget. The county wouldn't sign off on it in, in that state. So that's why we adopted the EUSD plan, the dark blue line with those projected cuts. Now, remember the 5.6 million in carryover I talked about that carried over into the current year, a combination of additional revenues and spending freeze and other transferring of expenses as part of our EUSD plan from our one-time money. So the light blue line there represents taking that 5.6. Now, I will tell you, at this point, we've had to add some additional staff. We are seeing, and we're going to talk about it in another slide, some enrollment decline as well, and there's, there's a revenue loss associated with that. So that 5.6 million is already reduced to some degree, and we'll have that fully updated when we get to first interim. But as it stands, let's live in the world where that 5.6 lives in its entirety. The light blue line, you can see it corresponding to the bottom. The first idea then is to spread that out across the next two years, reducing the cuts in both years, still needing to make 1.8 million in cuts in that next year and 0.5 in the, in the third year there in order to keep that line where it is above the black. The yellow line represents taking the entirety of any carryover we've, we hold on to from last year and then applying it 100% to the cuts that were projected for next year. And so in this case, if it was 5.6, we're reducing that 4.6 down to zero cuts, meaning we'd be able to maintain the district as it stands today. And then that would leave us with 2.3 million in cuts to make in that third year. We don't know what the governor's budget proposal is going to bring us in January. We're going to obviously be paying attention to that as we do every year and see what, if any, new monies are coming. I know there's been talk about starting the repayment plan that the, the governor has had to adopt as part of cutting the COLA before in underfunding education. Perhaps there might be some one-time monies that come that could help us to ease the burden of those cuts in that third year. We don't have to make a decision on this tonight. We don't really have to make a decision on this all the way until we get into the March timeframe with our, with our second interim that we've been using. This is for adopting our budget for next year. So as it stands, this budget year, we're good to go and the plan we've already adopted. But these are conversations. We're going to continue to update this forecaster. You'll see an updated version of it at the first interim in December and again in March for our second interim. As we get our actuals for the current year and how that's going, we will have to make a decision on what we're going to do, if any changes or adjustments to our EUSD plan going forward. But that's just a, a visual way to represent a recommendation that perhaps we can reduce the amount of cuts that we are facing in the next year to maintain operations as we have them for this year. So as we've already cut significantly into our district going into this year. Is there any questions on the forecaster?
It's not a question. I just, I would like to see that we don't, you know, if we could hold back as many cuts as possible and still say, stay solvent, that would be my preference just because that, those are people and those are people's careers. And so if we could keep the people at the district, I think that's important.
Yeah, over 80% of our budget is people costs, meaning that every single thing that we do is people doing it. And so obviously, if we're able to reduce those cuts, I mean, that's vitally important to the health of our district. Anything, anything else before I move on here? All right. So the first interim outlook, as we, as this isn't an official adopt, you know, adjustment to our budget, the first interim will be the next time where we would adopt a revision to our budget. So what we'll be updating you on then is the increase. So we have seen an increase in TK enrollment. Some of that, some of our kids that are born outside of the birth year range where they're funded, some of them are funded, but no matter what, we had about 178 additional TK kids than what we had projected, meaning we needed to add some more staff. So we're going to have an update on the actual impact of that. Also, like I said, our enrollment, we're still declining. We projected an enrollment decline from last year. We saw as of, this was when we were going to do this presentation, a couple of weeks ago, it was sitting at 13,907. Today, actually, it was 13,918. But still, it's in the realm of being at about an $800,000 reduction in revenue in the current year because of that decline being, the enrollment coming in lower than what we even projected in our budget for this year, already projecting a decline. So we grew in TK, but we lost kids in other grade levels. And I think when we get to first interim, we'll have an updated kind of comparison of which grade levels we lost kids in from last year to this year, just so we can kind of get a visual on that and explore some ideas we can do to try to prevent that loss in future years. But again, that will result in a reduction in, in revenue for the current year by about $800,000. That would then be part of our budget revision that would be adopted in December at first interim. We're also going to have much more time behind us in December to talk about how we've been doing with the average daily attendance. I would like to say that so far this year, as we've been looking at it day over day, this day compared to the same day of last year, every day, for the most part, we've been better than last year. And right now, last year at this time, we were averaging about 93.7 ADA. It did tail off after that throughout the year. But we have a completely revamped focus on attendance and keeping attendance up and improving attendance through our seat program and other things that we're doing district-wide that our principals are very much helping us with. And all of our teachers and parents out there, that right now, we're averaging 94.7, so a full point increase over where we were at this point last year. I would expect that trend to continue because the difference between this year and last year is that we are not letting up on this. We are hearing feedback that we are just hammering the point home, that every day counts. And we're hearing that coming back to us, and we're seeing that kids are actually coming to school much more consistently even at this early point. So by time December comes, I would stand before you and very much hope that that bet that I made on us that we would hit our goal of 94% comes true and we even beat that. And of course, if we're able to do that, that allows us to have some of the reserve monies we set aside. If I were to remind you, on the NYPD down there at the bottom, enrollment ADA loss, we set aside 2 million of our one-time funds to offset the financial impact, certainly with the $800,000 loss in revenue because of enrollment decline. If we got up to 95%, we projected our budget, built our revenues on 94. If we were able to get back to our historic low of 95%, that would go a long way to offsetting the, the negative impact of that $800,000 decline. And then a great stand, starting point for the next few years of seeing that to grow even back to some of our historical highs as much as 97%. Also, we're going to talk again at first interim when we update our actuals of how we're going by the midway point of the year. And this is the time where we can start not making necessarily decisions for next year yet, but have a, a much more clarity on how we stand and what adjustments we might need to make to our EUSD plan based on that new information. The EUSD plan is represented by, at this point, the, the dark blue line on top. And do we want to look at any other optional versions of that, like the light blue and the yellow line that we talked about a minute ago? Like I keep saying, our next steps in December will come back before you and present our, for our first interim, the revision to our budget at the midway point of the year on December 14th, barring any potential catastrophes around the corner at the power plant. We'll keep that date. I guess you had to be there. We will also have, again, updated ADA projections going forward, an updated version of our multi-year projection, including the graphical version, the forecaster. We will also, we're in the process now of our We will also, we're in the process now of our audit, we'll be finalizing our audit process for the last school year. And then in January, on January 31st, 2025, our auditor will stand before you and present our audit and any findings and whatnot that are pertinent for the board at that time. Are there any questions? Or comments? Mr. Olson?
No question, just, I appreciate, I was going to say this in my report, but I just appreciate the emphasis that the entire district, uh, all staff have had on, on attendance. We obviously know that that's, uh, there's a financial component to it. That's not the purpose of it. We know the, the learning that comes from that. Uh, but also the, the comment that you mentioned about, you know, i- if we could look into that loss, like obviously it seems like it's been common in California, districts have been reducing for years. So it's kind of just been, I don't want to say it's been accepted, but you know, we, we have an opportunity to say, hey, that's not a big number. It's not a big loss. Can we find out what was, where did they go? Did they move? Did they choose a different, uh, educational platform, which, you know, for school choice, they can go where they want to go, but it would be good feedback for us to help, uh, us understand and, you know, perhaps curtail or adjust our programming to, to make sure that we continue to be the, the number one choice for education in Escondido, which we've all, uh, stated is our goal. So appreciate the emphasis on that and that there is a, is a desire to kind of find out, uh, where those students went, why, and if we can make adjustments to prevent that in the future. So, thank you.
Yeah, if we were to lose fifth grade students, we'd see on that report, maybe we start talking to them before the end of the fifth grade year, going into sixth, you know, just so that we can kind of head that off. And something that might be in a different presentation, but it's important to point out, developments are coming into this community rapidly. We're hearing about more and more apartments and housing developments. And so as you said, this district being the number one choice for education in the community and us doing all the work that we're doing now to set ourselves up for that, to be able to win those students when they move into our community. And that's the work we're doing now.
Yeah, and I appreciate there, I mean, I know there's development all over the place, but you know, are we seeing as those developments come online, are we seeing a bump? Are we going to see that in two years as those individuals come into it and have kids and develop? Yes, it's not a, a short-term kind of answer, but if we can continue to track it over time, you know, it'll paint the picture of where we can target and how we can, you know, we, we need to market ourselves. We need to make sure that we are getting into the, the, the minds and into the homes of people that are having kids come to school. So appreciate the thoughts on that.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
Just a point of clarification, the, the December board meeting is on December, on the 17th.
It's already changed. I knew I couldn't count on that date.
Any other questions? I think we're good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
What is it, actually? Thank you. Go guys, go.
Run!
They have to get up, be at their schools tomorrow morning, bright, bright eyed and pushy.
I am so sorry, guys.
It's just working.
I found, I logged in and it works. The resolution passes five to zero. Moving on to N2.
I'm looking for ratification of the enrichment wheel job description where we remove the sunset. It's the same exact job description.
Move approval.
Second.
Have you sent it? And it passes five to zero. Moving on to board policies.
I have a multitude of board policies here and I've not seen, I'm trying to remember which item, which one of the board policies was first, so I got two, so I'll just go off the order that I remember them in. So one of them is an update based on federal law about civil rights, uh, legislation around our nutrition program that is primarily funded by the federal government. Uh, just kind of an anti-discrimination update to that law, uh, there. And so this board policy would just be adopting and bringing in the federal law updates to that. And then the other board policy is about our facilities, use of our facilities. Um, one update was made for that related to opening our schools up if law enforcement would like to provide training and, uh, to anybody, but primarily focused at students around e-bike use, which is a, a, a big issue in many communities and I see them starting to come up around Escondido now. Uh, as well as updating the kind of timeframe for when our facilities would be allowed to be used for an outside group, setting that where it used to be immediately when school got out dismissal, which creates just a bottleneck of things happening at the school, setting that to being 15 minutes after the kids basically clear the campus, which gives us flexibility to when that time period is. Sometimes that could be 20, 30 minutes at a school, so that we're not having to now accommodate somebody that's needing to use our facility, uh, until we're clear of most of our students. And of course, the work we would do with that would always be around what our after-school program is doing and making sure that all of our students are also safe for, uh, around anything that's being brought onto our campus in the after-school, uh, time period. So those are the two, the, the big points, the high points of the two board policy updates that are before you tonight.
Okay, so I would make a, I would move to approve board policy 1330 related to use of school facilities, just to start things off.
I'll second.
Can, can we do both of them together?
Yeah.
Okay, in that case, I will additionally move to approve board policy 3555, nutrition program compliance as a part of this original motion.
And I still second it.
And I've already voted. Good.
Well, you always have the option to rescind your votes, change your votes.
And it passes five zero. Moving on to H2.
I'm looking for approval of this, of these board policies as presented.
No bargaining units.
They're agreeing.
I move approval of all these, these. As presented, thank you.
Second.
And it passes five zero. And going down to, uh, board members and president's reports, Mark?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank our triple E, triple EA, yeah, it's late. Representative, we had a great conversation, discussion meeting today. Want to thank them for all the work that they do. We know, we talked about the beginning of the year hiccups, as well as the beginning of, of the year triumphs, uh, which there were many of each. And I think it just shows a collaborative effort of, we know they're going to be there, um, looking for the positive, but also addressing the things that we can work on. So I want to thank them for, for all the work as well as all the staff. Uh, I know I mentioned it as well, but I'm just really glad that we're placing an emphasis on attendance. It seems like in every communication on the website. Uh, I love that there's some schools that are doing competitions. I think that's fantastic. Uh, sounds like there's been some really create, creative competitions and, uh, would love to foster that and expand it to different sites and maybe have some sort of district that can get the entire community involved, because we know the whole community benefits when more of our students are in school. And, you know, in the, in the parks and recreation world, we say we build a community through people parks and programs, but that's a, that's an extension of the community that's already there through the different, uh, public entities. So I'm, I'm glad that that's a central focus, not because it provides us additional funding, but because it does truly build the community, um, through the education of our, of our youth. So thank you for everyone that's been involved in that and that's the end of my report.
Hi, I attended the community schools, um, meeting, which was, um, very good. They have a lot of enthusiasm for what they're starting to build and putting it all together. So that was, um, great to see and we'll have another one, I think, what, in December? In December. Um, attended the insurance committee. We're still trying to nail down those rates. They're going to have open enrollment here soon, so we've got to make some decisions trying to do what we can with those rates. Um, I also attended a tour with Dr. Ibarra of Conway and Del Dios. Both campuses were really calm. All the students were engaged. It was great to see, um, great ideas of what they're working on there. Again, wanted to thank Triple EA for our communication meeting, always great to keep those lines open. Um, I also attended the Step Beyond fundraiser for one of our after-school programs. They had, um, two students that they highlighted to show the impact of that program. It was excellent. Uh, also wanted to thank MNO, I know it's mentioned before, but dealing with ACs with all these 105 degree weather, keeping our students cool, um, because I know there was a lot of spots that popped up, so thank you for taking care of that. And then, um, I just wanted to comment on the parent speaker that was here, because obviously, you know, safety is a huge concern of me, of mine. Two of the things we do at my daughter's school is we always have an open house before school starts. So about the week before, I always lose track, but we go, we meet our teacher, we bring in all the supplies, they can tour the school if they want, um, which is a great welcoming to the student. And then also we have a program called, um, I think it's called Pick My Kid Up. So you're assigned a number, so all the students stay in their class and you, on the app, you announce for your kid and then they come out to the front and meet you at the car. And then there's, our aides are there to put them in our car. So that's some of the processes we use, um, to really watch our students, because no one can just leave campus and walk off after school. They have to either sign out to say they're walking home or there has to be a, you know, permission given adult there to, you know, let them out. I mean, even my daughters tried to pick up Penny and they wouldn't let her take her because they weren't on the emergency card, which really upset me, but I understand it. But they, I understand it, but so it, it's a very formalized procedure there. So just putting my two cents in on that. Thank you.
And I would just also like to, uh, echo comments thanking MNO, uh, all, all of our staff, teachers, administrators, everybody for a smooth opening of the year with, with hiccups as always. I, I would also, uh, listening to Mr. Garner, um, that's concerning. And I, I, I do hope that we'll be reaching out to him to make sure that his concerns have been addressed and that we can learn something. I did make a note that I was glad that the principals were here to hear someone, because some of his comments about the jargon that we use, the, the assumption that everybody knows where the fifth grade gate is, where the blacktop is. Our community, our parents, we don't necessarily know everything about our schools and we don't necessarily know the, uh, US system of education. We don't necessarily know these things. And certainly tightening up safety procedures and making sure, um, that seven-year-olds are not getting off campus without people knowing, um, is, is, obviously that's got to be a priority. At the same time, uh, just, just a comment, we have discussed for at least the time I've been on the board, this idea of getting promotional, written promotional materials out to the brokerage community, out to the apartment communities, out, you know, uh, I like the idea of winning students. We need to win students. And, you know, with so many, um, large complexes opening in Escondido, we need to have our literature, our presence in those communities as they're opening. Um, I also like the idea of, yeah, let's figure out where students are going. Is there really a citywide declining enrollment, which I kind of suspect there is? Um, because I know classical, I know, uh, heritage are also experiencing the same thing, interactively recruiting kids as we are. But there's something else. We've got a lot of charter schools and charter schools that we know nothing about. I know of 22 operating in Escondido that I know of. That's, and I don't know. In Escondido, and those are only the ones I know of. And so, you know, I don't even know, I know some of them are operated out of Borrego Springs, you know, Julian, uh, all of those different charter operators, and there are some that are statewide. I wish we had a handle on what charters were operating within our city, you know? And certainly there's nothing we can do about the fact that there's no oversight and their, their operators may barely know that they're open. But I do think we need to know and just figure that into our calculation of where our students may be going. You know, um, I mean, the, our high school district, I think we all know operates a K-12 charter school. And so, you know, and that K-8 aspect of it, uh, I, I don't, I, I'm just wondering how many students, if any, were losing in that kinder through eighth grade section. So just, just a few thoughts. Thank you.
That's a little scary, 22.
That I know of.
Yeah. Well, I, I know there's always been a historical drop-off after fifth grade, going into middle school. But, uh, and, and the bright light is our rise in TK enrollment. So maybe there's been a new movement with little kids. Might be some, some good news on the horizon as they, they make their way through the grade levels. I also attended the insurance committee meeting with, along with Zesty and, um, nothing has changed. Rates keep going up and they're expected to go up again next year. So, uh, some way we have to get a handle on this because it's becoming ridiculously unaffordable for some of our employees to maintain, uh, even the basic health coverage, the, the lowest end. So, um, also happy Constitution Day on the day. Thank you for, for noting it also in your update, Dr. Ibarra, this, this year I got it right. I hope the message was transmitted in our schools as well. This is an important time for, uh, constitution has the, talk about the constitution is being bandied about, um, an awful lot now. And it, it's not too early for our, our kids to learn about it and the importance of it to our republic. And also I hope everyone got their tickets to the fashion show because I'm really looking forward to it. There was a, a little bit of a glitch when the notice first went out and, uh, but that was in actually clicking on to and getting tickets. So I hope no one, no one got discouraged, but, uh, that was solved and I had such a good time last year. I can't wait for it this year. And that's on October 19th. And that's my report.
Thank you. And I also wanted to thank Triple EA for the little collaboration earlier this evening. I thought it went very well. Thank you for, thank you for, uh, coming out and, uh, giving us the hiccups and also the triumphs. We really enjoy that and it really helps, uh, us understand your positions and everything else. So we really appreciate you, uh, taking that time out of your day to come.
else, so we really appreciate you taking that time out of your day to come and have that discussion with us. Additionally, on the 4th of September, I attended the Safety Committee with Trent. Trent ran the meeting, went very well, looking forward to see you at our next one where we're at, and we expect to, some of the topics that we brought up was very well done, thank you Trent for doing that. And that is it for me.
I have no report tonight.
Yes, so just, we are starting up our fieldwork experiences, so we have a partnership with Palmar Health, and so we have our eighth graders who have been going out to do that fieldwork, and it's really a chance for them to learn about the different medical professions, and they're very much enjoying it.
Outstanding.
I just wanted to let you know that our four new residents have started, and so in the future, we will update you as we, they're in the first four weeks, and they're excited, and they're having a great time, so we'll keep you updated.
Fantastic. Thank you. No report. Alrighty. And moving on to the next meeting, will be held on Thursday, October 3rd, 7:00 PM at the Escondido Union School District, Caroline Gilbert Education Center. We will not be going into closed session, so we are adjourned. Thank you.